All right, we're gonna call this workshop the airport to order.
They're gonna handle it in the back. Say again? Oh, nothing, Mayor, you can go.
Okay. All right, Toby, you wanna take this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Before we start, we're gonna get Garver on the phone. Jesse and Michael, are we doing that back here or up there in the front? Okay, if you don't mind, call them real quick, we'll get them on the phone. This will be, I don't know, I believe it'll be Matt Serenick and Gordon. They're both with Garver, they're the ones doing the design CEI for this project. Jesse, while he's pulling, while he's calling, will you pull up the sheet I just forwarded you a few minutes ago? Thank you. Okay, Michael, we'll try them again in a little bit.
Okay.
I think we can move forward for the most part unless we have specific questions.
Go ahead, Kobe.
All right, Mayor, so just gonna give a quick overview of the project and the funding, and then we can get into some of what I'm looking for, and we can get into discussion, if that's all right with everyone. So this is the Runway 927 Widening Extension Project. We are now at that point that we talked about back in the spring. We're gonna, we were gonna get to the point where the environmental assessment was getting submitted to FAA for review. It was gonna have a number of months to be reviewed by the agency. And then preliminary design was gonna, was gonna stop until we came back to the council, told you where we were, what we're looking at, and if it's up to the councils, they want to continue moving forward with design while that EA, environmental assessment's being reviewed. So first off, let's just take a quick at the funding. To this project, we have five and a half million dollars that the county designated from their ARPA funds for this. The city designated two million dollars for their ARPA funds. FDOT, we had a grant for $650,000 for design. And then we, the funds from 1836, the dirt runway, that the council moved a few years back, that's an amount of $2,156,555.04. That grant agreement, we're still working with the state on that, Garver's actively doing that, and we hope to get that here soon. So that brings us to a project total, funding secured of $10,306,555.04. So that, that is the funding. If you see the sketch on the screen, and there are handouts for the public as well, we got this today from Garver, this is an updated sketch, it's got updated numbers as well. And so what we can do is we can walk through this pretty quickly. And you'll see that this project is busted up in two priorities. Priority one, FDOT compliance items, and priority two, airfield improvements. Priority one are the things that DOT and FAA are going to require us to do if we want to do this project, the whole thing. These, these, these issues have been noted on our license for the last couple of years in our renewals. And so with the money, and DOT's made it very clear with the PTGA agreement, that it's gotta be a part of some of these aspects of the project. And so what that will be is that I will remove the existing road that you see that's kinda scratched out there, running north-south in the red. It will relocate the fence. It will do tree clearing in a section you see on the west end of the runway. It will extend Air Park Road. We will get to that a little, little bit deeper in just a second. It will, it will create Huckabur Road Connection, that's a piece of property that the city bought a few months back. And then runway reconstruction, so that is the hump in the runway. That's the part of the runway that needs to be leveled and repaged as part of this. So back to the Air Park Road Connection. If you all see on the east side of Gene Hurley Park, right there where the mouse is, the cursor, there is a dotted line. That is what the road relocation shows on our airport layout plan. We've been in contact with Garver, myself and Andre, we've talked to them a lot about this. They recommend we do not do that path, and rather we do the path that you see at the north end of Gene Hurley Park to the red, to your, on the east, yeah, right there, coming across here in the front. That would shorten the distance, and wouldn't be as much groundwork to be done, and have less impacts to potential trails that run through there. And that is to the tune of about $292,000 cheaper than the ALP proposed road relocation. The second priority is airfield improvements. This encompasses a runway and expansion and widening, which is widening, widening, and extension of that, and then the taxiway fillet widening. So this one's a little better, you see the yellow sections? Those would have to be widening, widened in accordance with the runway. Bigger planes also need bigger taxiways off. So all of those aspects of the project combined is $11,517,300. Of our funding of $10,306,000, $176,000 is the environmental assessment, $90,000 was to purchase the property there off of Huckabur Road, $689,747 is design, and $458,734 is CEI. I tell you that because we need to go ahead and back that out of our total money. Those are things we know we've either spent or are going to spend. That leaves us with $8,892,074 for construction. So if you're looking at that...
Kobe, are you reading all this paper?
Yes, but I got my numbers, I've broken down more detail.
Oh, so, okay, so you're not following anything in particular?
So Jesse, go back to the detachment on the document. Scroll down to this, to A1.2. And I apologize, I'm going fast on me.
You're going fast.
I'm pretty intimate with this information, so...
Yeah, comprehend what you're...
Zoom in on that, please.
Thank you, buddy. Yeah, I don't seem to have that page.
So this is on the attachment, this is what was attached to the agenda. And so a lot of the numbers you see, I'm talking about the funding in the top-left corner there, the $10,306,000. Then you will see the pre-project ARPA, so the EA, the property purchase. You'll see the engineering, per total, $1.1,148,000. And then you see the other priorities. Now, this information is prior to the update that we received today, which is the sketch you're looking at now, the new number. The old number, and what you would've seen on document A1, was $14,739,450. So what has happened is as Garver has done their preliminary design, they've done their surveying, their, their geo-work, they've found a lot of, they've found the ability to cut down a lot of costs when it comes to the line of sight issue, and also to reduce the contingency from 30% to 20%. Now they have a better understanding of the project. And hopefully that will even come down further as we got into construction bidding. Contingencies are used around 10%. So that's, that's where we're at with the funding and the aspects of the project. Make sure I'm not missing anything here.
Did you see anything there?
So of the, of the project of $11,517,300, which is the sketch you have before you, and of the funding we have, when you back it out based off of expenses we know to be true, we are short $2,625,226 for priority number two. Again, priority number two encompasses a runway extension and widening, and a taxi fillet widening. So we have to meet the, we have to do the projects in priority one, those are requirements from DOT and FAA.
And so for project two, what you're saying we're short, at what point in time will we get there to figure out how we're gonna develop this cash flow?
So as we continue to move through design, we hope to refine the numbers even more. Like I said, contingency would probably be a big one that would come down, currently at 20%. Garver also included in all these estimates a 2.5% escalation. Because when we started doing this, we told them we wanna see what could be the worst-case scenario. We wanna be preparing for the worst. And so as we go through design, I hope the costs will come down. But I don't know that we'll cut 2.6 million out of that, right, even from that. So we will have to find more funding.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking, at what point in time are we gonna get there to where you're gonna need the funding? Is that this fiscal year, is it next fiscal year?
Next fiscal year, so when you see the airport budget this year, it'll go from about $4 million to $23 million or so. Because all the grant money that we have for this project and the Hangar Development Project will be in the budget. Because all the deadlines are the end of 2026 calendar year. So these projects will be moving really fast over the next few months.
So the $2 million shortfall, I just wanna clarify, the $2 million shortfall that you're talking about right this minute is in the 2026 budget? That will be a shortfall, like you're gonna have to figure out where that money's gonna come from?
No, so our, our budget will be balanced.
I understand.
But the project, the, the cost of the project and the funds we have for the cost of the project, we will be short $2.6 million, yes.
But we won't be to the point, time-wise, where you're gonna need to spend that 2.6 next year before 9/30 of '26?
Well, you need the 2.6, '26 or '27.
'26 or '27?
'26, fiscal year '26. The project has to be completed by, by December 31st, 2026. Because $7.7 million, which is ARPA, city and county, has a deadline of December 31st, 2026.
And what's realistically getting extension for those ARPA monies to be extended beyond that timeframe?
Cannot.
No, oh.
Go ahead, Don.
So I, I do wanna report that the, the airport, and specifically, if I remember correctly, Kobe, correct me if I'm wrong, these projects were included in the TPO project list as of this year. So I, I have faith that the, the inclusion of that at, at the TPO level, partnered with our excellent partners, Liberty, Liberty Partners, sorry to say partner so many times, I think that we can, we can make this work. We faced almost the exact same amount, and I referenced this at, at the grand opening of the airport. We faced almost the exact same shortfall with the terminal. When we rebid the terminal and we were short, it, it went from a $3 million project to a $9 million project, and a lot of that was contingency that we had to come up with and we had to sit on just in case. So I, I fully believe, Kobe has worked these numbers for several years now. I, I have faith in Tim and Jennifer. With, with the current funding that we received, it's, it's much easier to go to our legislators and our other federal officials and say, there's $25 million committed, we just need a little bit more to get this completed. I see that happen all the time at the TPO level, where people say, hey, we've got this funding, we just need a little bit more to get it completed, and what do you know, that funding shows up.
Yeah, go ahead.
So does that, so what I'm, I'm hearing from you is it's not gonna come out of our other revenues that we're trying to balance our budget with? You believe it's gonna come from other sources outside of...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And if we don't, we're gonna sunset and lose a lot of money.
That's right.
Is that right?
Yes, if we were to stick to the plan presented, we would sunset. If we, if the city were to get into a situation in which we could not find those funds, right, really, if we just could not, we would come back and present an alternative plan to use those funds for the benefit of the airport, 100%. We're not gonna, we are not in the business of giving money back to the federal government at all.
Okay, so at a workshop, there's no motion, right?
Yeah, right.
I'd like to, I'd like to support this, but instead of hearing Utah talk about how optimistic you are about us getting these extra funds, I'd like to hear it from Tim Parsons. Not to put you on the spot, Tim. Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, come on up.
No, 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 I'll call him up. Say again?
I think Mr. Harrison has something to say.
Go ahead.
Just a clarification, Kobe, on the contingency, am I looking at this correctly on the sheet that you gave us today? The new information. Contingencies for, let's see. Had it right in my head a minute ago. All right, for, for priority one, $860,000 contingency, right?
Correct.
20% calculation on that particular part of the project. Priority two, one point, well, $1,500,000 contingency there. So for a total contingency of project one and two, of $1.9 million. And then inflation calculated for the two, two projects, priority one and two, we're looking at $282,000. So in inflation calculations and contingency allowance, we're at $2 million. So if those contingencies don't come into play, they don't cost us, correct?
So I can just about guarantee, when we have the grant agreements with the state, particularly with the state, they're gonna require a certain level of contingency if you place in the contract. Typically, it's around 10%, I think is what we've, we've historically seen on these. So 10% you will have to budget as part of the project cost. Now, those don't come in at the end, you know, that's a different story. But we will have to budget them, because you also have retainers and stuff, so yeah, we will have to factor some of this in.
Correct. But there is a chance that they won't come in.
Correct, there, there is a chance that as, as design gets further along, and we go to bid the project, engineers could have, that could come down based off of what they see and what the project's bid out at. Contractor may have a 10%, they may have a 12%, it just depends on what they see.
Mayor? I've seen Liberty Partners perform miracles for this city, and y'all have done an outstanding job, and we wouldn't be on this airport project where we are if it weren't for y'all. So there's gonna be another legislative session, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you did remarkable on this last one. So do you feel like this is a safe gamble? Do you think this is a good? You know, we're, we're hoping, but what, we wanna hear something a little more solid than a hope and a prayer.
Mayor, if, if I may, you know, a lot of these numbers we've, you know, reviewed since they came out, and I know that, as Kobe had stressed, that some of these numbers are worst-case scenario. I, I think the 30% contingency is, is on the very high end. So I, I think as we work on these numbers, work on them with the engineering firm, and come to a, you know, come to something that we can put our arms around, and, and then go either, either like you said, to request funds, additional funds to complete the project from the legislature, or seek out different grant opportunities. We know that, we know that there's plenty of economic development-related grant opportunities that are out there that we could pursue on behalf of the city. Very, very confident that this is a project that, that the funds will be able to be identified and obtained. We, we know how important this project is. This was really something that this council had set forth as a priority many, many years ago. I think, Mayor, you probably know exactly when.
Before my time, really. I mean, we've certainly expanded, but hell yeah, the...
And, and having gone to the county and asked them to be a big partner in this. I said, and, and with regard to the ARPA funds, well, we know there's no, there's no wiggle room with, with expending those funds by the end of next year. There, there's no way out of that. But as far as, you know, working on additional funds to help complete the project, we're, we're very confident in that.
And I'd not, not only like to thank Liberty Partners, but Congressman Dunn, Representative Shane Abbott. Y'all have really done a lot to help us, and we've got too much to lose to not go forward on this. So do you feel okay with this, Amy?
I don't have enough information yet.
Okay.
Any other questions for Tim? Thank you very much, okay. Kobe?
So Mayor, that's, if there's any more questions about that, we can go deeper into that. But ultimately, what conversation we need to have today is, again, we are at the point we talked about a few months ago. The, the EA, and Kevin's here to speak on that, he needs to, is, has been going back and forth with FAA and providing comments. That's very soon to be submitted for formal review by the FAA.
We've actually submitted.
Okay, and so they, do they tell me how much, how long they have?
Yes, that's gonna be several weeks.
Yeah, so there is a set period they have of a review of that. Oh, it's several weeks, so the EA's been submitted to the FAA. It's gonna take a few, it's gonna take several weeks to be reviewed. However, we've stopped design, so design has done its, its preliminary stuff, and they're ready to move on to get closer to 30% and to move forward with that aspect. What I want the council to be comfortable with and decide if that's what they wanna do or not, is if we continue with design as the EA's being reviewed, right? The risk is always, if they, FAA gets it and there's go-for tortoises somewhere, there's an endangered species, or there's a tree that can't, whatever, we may have to go back and look at design and may have to make some minor tweaks or this or that. So there's always the risk that you run of spending money and having to do a 180 and go a different direction. So that's something I look for direction with the council on. But that, that's where we're at, we're at that confliction point, we need to decide if we're gonna wait or if we're gonna move forward.
I'll, I'll just leave the charge here and say that I, I think we do need to move, move forward. I think we have, we have our backs up against the wall with these ARPA funds. And this, this EA, we, we've gotta operate these in parallel and understand that there is a little bit of risk here. But there's also a tremendous economic reward in having this airport flourish and be what we all know it can be. So I understand that there, there is a risk, but I believe, again, I'm just one opinion, based on everything I've seen, we're not gonna have any kind of major, major issues with the EA. Because I do wanna remind everybody that a preliminary EA, or I guess you could call it, you know, that, that would be my phrase, was conducted way back in, I think it was 2018, 2019, it was partially completed. And we didn't, we didn't have any major concerns then. So I'm not saying that there's not gonna be tweaks and adjustments, but I firmly believe that we've got to continue this parallel course and allow this development, or this engineering to continue because of the timelines that are involved. Because I, I don't wanna see any, any of these ARPA dollars disappear.
Okay, so my question is, I understand the risk, but let's put it, how long do we have to wait, Kobe, for this assessment to come back to us so that we will know? For example, if we do need to run parallel, we're only doing it for two months, we're really not gonna be out that much money. But is it gonna be six months? And I don't know where they are on the design, I don't know what we're paying for the design, you know what I mean?
I'm trying to pull up the most previous design invoice. Try to pull up most, uh, design invoice. So design as a whole, and again, on A1.2, is, design is 600, sorry, $689,747. 650 of that is a grant. The difference of $39,747 will be paid out of the ARPA funds at the end of the design portion of it. But I'm trying to pull up now exactly what our last...
Is that what we're risking that portion of the project right now by paralleling?
The risk isn't by paralleling, is if, if we go through design and it takes FAA three months to do the reserve view, and within three months, Garver spends $50,000 on design, they build us, they do a back, we may
Have to go back and re...
eat that and restart again, and that means we have to tack that on to the construction dollars we have.
I'm not necessarily opposed to what the councilmen's suggesting, but I am wanting to be very cautious on, okay, how much time are we really trying to put to this?
So we, we, I mean, we don't know exactly how many weeks, but we've been, we've always kinda factored in three months as, as that time period of review. It could be shorter, it could be longer, we, we don't know, we've never been through this before.
Well, where are we on the design to where, I would like to know, where are we on the design to know whether it's $50,000 or...
That's what I'm pulling up.
What acreage exactly are we looking at for the environmental assessment? Is it the, the, the actual end of the runway as well, or is it just these blocked-off areas?
It's a, it's a, it's a larger area, we've been on purpose, I'll let Kevin explain.
It's about 300 acres, so, yeah, the whole, the whole site is what we're looking at to, to update. So we are gonna get, it should be several weeks to get comments back on this, this round of, of the EA assessment, but once, then we're gonna get comments back. So we're, I think we're thinking about October, probably having the assessment totally complete and have all their final comments. But we, we should get some, like I said, several weeks to get these, this next round of comments. The NOISE study has kinda held up. They, they've been wanting to, they've been asking a lot of questions about that. And then, and I concur with Councilman Beer Mom that you don't wanna lose momentum, because this is a different, they've had a lot of turnover FAA, the environmental people are much tougher than they've been in the past. In fact, they told us that it's gonna be statewide, any project is gonna come under more scrutiny environmentally. So you don't wanna, you don't wanna start over, you wanna keep the momentum going, we're, we're at the, you know, we're, we're in the red zone with the assessment, we're gonna keep it moving and keep it going.
Let me ask you a question on the, back when we had the industrial site certified, which I don't know if it's 50 or 60 acres total, did that have to have an environmental assessment? Because when it was done, you were guaranteed six months of inhabiting that property. So I didn't know, I didn't keep up with all the, everything it required. And one other question, is, everything is occupied now and in use, is that in jeopardy to the environmental study?
Well, the, the other thing that's held up is the, of course, the Gene Hurley Park, that's one they keep asking about, and this, and, and we're trying to give them a solid answer on what the plan is for that. And that, so that's been, that's been the holdup. But to, to try to answer your question, I mean, we, we have focused on the, the fence in, you know, we didn't really focus on the, the industrial zone part, because that wasn't part of the project. So that, we've been kinda focused on everything inside, that's, we don't wanna do anything more than what's required, so...
But in terms of the first, Florida First Sites, Mayor, I don't think Kevin really has, they weren't here for that. But we can't find anything where an environmental assessment's done for those designations.
I just know that when it was completed, and it took a long time to get completed, those properties were guaranteed at that time, six months for, to be in occupied with industry, you know? So, go ahead.
I'm just curious, what has to happen from your perspective between now and October?
Like I said, we're gonna, we're gonna get the final round of comments, and then we'll, we're expecting, we are always expecting comments, so we're gonna address those quickly. But I think we have all the major things, major concerns dealt with, so it's just a matter of them concurring with all of our assessments.
Are you just in a holding pattern?
Yep.
Do I understand you're in a holding pattern until you get the assessment back?
Until we get their next round of comments back, and then we'll, we'll do the final, because we know we're gonna get comments back. So we're, we're just, we're just anticipating comments, and then we'll hopefully finalize that. And, but they're, they're telling us October-ish timeframe is when we could probably get this thing right up.
And I don't mean to be thick, so what is it that we need to parallel if they're in a holding pattern?
And we're actually, we've been talking with Garver too. We've, we've been really kinda talking with them too, to make sure we're in alignment with what we're getting approved, so that, so they're not, you know, surprised about anything too. But if, if we're gonna be altering alignments of the road, I was texting one of our engineers, and that, that could change the assessment, but not hugely. I mean, the, with all the, all the environmental things, it wouldn't affect, but we would have to amend the assessment of the alignment of the road. But that's, that wouldn't be a big change if we had to do that, so...
Because the majority of that piece probably is already in use for the park. But what's being paused is, you have two different firms doing two different things at the moment. You've got Bard Design, who's doing the environmental assessment, we have a separate agreement with for $176,000. And you've got Garver doing the design, the CEI of the project. They, that's what we're asking, do we wanna continue to move forward with the design as it's, as the EA is being reviewed by the FAA? And it's kept, I'm like, they've been in contact back and forth. The proposed alternative road relocation is going on to an already-used piece of property, actively being used at park. So the EA impacts are probably very minimal versus where it was going. It was going right through the middle of the woods and potentially affecting a trail, trailhead. So I'm also getting the number on the design so far.
So what's our options in reality, then? We don't have very many options to go from if we're, we don't wanna lose the money, that's the whole end goal, right? So what's the options?
So the deadlines you have on the design grant, I believe, is June 30th of 2026, which will be used up by then.
Yeah.
We expect design to be done, you know, early 2026, sometime into the spring. Your ARPA money, both the city and the county have a dead... Your ARPA money, both the city and the county have deadlines of December 31st, 2026. And then the FDOT will be a PTGA for the 2.1 million. Will most likely have a deadline of usually a year out from the date we get it. So it'll probably end up being June 30th of 2027. However, those funds have to be used first, right? Because priority one, those projects have to be completed before you can get to the runway extension. That's just, that's just the nature of the project. So those are the deadlines.
So I'm, just one final question. What, okay, they're gonna give you a round of feedback. My question would be, okay, so you answer their, and give them another one. What happens next? Are they gonna come back with another round of feedback that we're gonna have to continue this?
I mean, we can't, of course, we can't guarantee the way FAA is working right now environmentally, but, you know, we're hoping we've got, but just talking with them, we think we've got the majority of concerns addressed, so we don't think it'd be major, major issues.
Because I noticed later on, we're gonna be talking about the other issue that you just mentioned, and I'm just curious, is that gonna satisfy?
I think, I think we're good on all the issues. It's just a matter of getting, getting it in the, the, how they want it to, to say and look and everything else.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
So as of today, we have paid Garber Engineers $86,928 for design of the $600, and $89,000 amount. So we roughly have $600,000 remaining on design.
That could be impacted by this assessment, whatever they might come back with.
Yes.
Kobe, does the city, I don't know if this is gonna affect you, sir. You might wanna stay at the podium.
He'll come back. Yeah, he'll come back.
Okay. Gene Hurley Park. Does that belong to us now? Are we still working on that, or where are we at on that process?
So that'll be a, we can get Tim and Jennifer in a second, but the, the park has sunset on the grant. It was just a FERDA grant. We spent a lot of time going over that last, like, two years ago, me and the mayor. I did a lot of digging. But it's sunset. So that's a conversation we're gonna have tonight later in the council meeting and then agenda item. We need to understand the council's direction for the park. Is the park going to stay? Is the park going to go? If it is gonna go, when is it gonna go? Obviously, the sooner we can identify that date, if that's what the majority of the council wants to do, the better. We can include that in the environmental assessment, which will probably help some of their, some of the FAA environmental people. We, we have beat our heads over numerous times that this project does not impact the park. They seem to wanna circle back around it every time, so.
And possibly a resolution, possibly, you know, they might wanna see something like that.
So that's, that's part of the conversation tonight. It's a park. It is a city park. We do have an interlocal agreement with the county. The county does maintain and operate it within their recreation program.
So isn't this park in the construction zone?
The roads.
Okay, so.
The very top portion of it.
What was that?
The very, the very top portion.
I've never even seen any kids play in there. Why don't we just use that for the benefit of the airport? It's not you be, being used for the benefit of, of children.
I don't think that's true. Didn't you say there was?
So I, I know that the county uses the recreation program for kickball, Tim. But I know, I know Councilman Beer Mom's also told me about some travel ball teams that utilize it as well. So that, that would be, everyone would be properly noticed.
Well, and, and in my conversations with those travel ball teams, they, they have acknowledged every time that they've spoken with me that, yes, we know at some point it's going away, we're just gonna use it until the day y'all tell us we can't use it. And it's just for practice. It's not, it's not that we're hosting tournaments out there.
And so does the county, so I have that conversation.
Do we have an alternative to send these kids to go play somewhere that they can, do we have another park they can use?
So, so a, a long time ago, and Mayor can probably speak to this a little bit better than I can, there, there was, when we were trying to advance, advance all of this, um, early in my tenure here, there was a proposal put forward to take the equipment while it was still under the FERDA grant and relocate it to the WeCare Park. And use that as a, kinda like a match, like a swap, and allow, and see if FERDA would allow us to do that. That never really got any traction, but that was, we had, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong here, we had some tentative agreement from the school board, as well as the county, to kinda participate in that project. Now, that's been four, five years ago now, so, I mean, that would certainly need to be revisited. But I also know that there is some development occurring out at Eagle Springs that maybe we could then say to the county, please consider adding ball fields. Because from what I understand, they're adding some other volleyball and pickleball and one other type of activity out there to Eagle Springs now, that that's apparently on the very early or near horizon. So maybe we can lean on the county to expand that and to include some of these practice fields.
But thankfully, we don't have, since it is sunset, we don't have the value to keep up with that we had back then.
Right.
Back then, it was, uh, golly.
It's $300,000.
Yeah, and now, we just love to give them, give them the lights, give them whatever they want, just take it and run. And, and we can do that now.
Can we still do that?
We can do that now. We could do that.
It's already done.
It's already done.
November 24, 2024. So we would definitely ensure that the field, not only applies to FERDA, but if there's anything the FAA may require in the review, and then we will, we will definitely coordinate with the county on it. Because if the city doesn't have a use for it, we definitely don't wanna get rid of good, good equipment.
So, so my hearing, sorry to jump in here, but am I hearing that there might be consensus to just go ahead and maybe pass a resolution that we close the park at a certain date? Let's, let's figure out what that date needs to be.
When their season ends or whatever.
When the season ends, but maybe in, you know, whatever would make the FAA happy, whether it's now or later, or whatever time it is.
How soon do you need it? So we have that conversation tonight. We have a conversation tonight, so we can bring back a resolution at the next meeting. And we'll just need to be mindful, and I will, I tried to pull it there, I could not find it, I found it, uh, the county's notice, we do have to notice the county's interlocal. So I'm gonna assume that's 60 or 90 days, but I was trying to find it, I could not, it's afternoon, so I'll try to locate that. But we'll need to keep that in mind as well.
Just out of curiosity, I don't know what's out there, because I, it's been a long time since I've been out there. But if they've got lights and stuff like that, and so that we don't have to reinvest in that in one of our other parks or whatever, is it potential that we could take whatever's there and put in one of our other parks? Besides giving it to?
Yeah, I mean, assuming there's no conflict, either it's the agencies, um, yeah, it's our equipment. So the park is ours, it's the city's. We, our interlocal agreement with the county is that they maintain and operate.
Was it Florence Park that we just did all those lights for, or y'all were waiting for?
It's the tennis court.
It was the tennis courts.
Oh, okay.
And these lights are not what you want, tennis court.
Okay.
Yeah, the baseball fields.
I mean, but we, I guess I'm just trying to say, can we salvage them versus giving them away to somebody else for nothing?
We could look into it. We'll look into it.
Anytime we can scratch the county's back, I'm off.
Yeah, no, they, they like it, they like it. They can smile, because it's, it is very old.
So, um.
Go ahead.
This may sound cold, but I think the greater good for this piece of property would be to the airport. And, um, if we could, we've already lost opportunities by letting Grant sunset. And that, that right there, that piece of property could be very advantageous to our future plans on the airport, so. Um, it, this may sound cold, but I'm not a big fan of the park there.
And so one of the things we have, we have done, um, back, I think, two weeks ago, Denise and James, Liberty Partners, submitted a grant for us. It was a No Max grant, it's a community planning technical assistance grant. And so the narrative of it and the request is, uh, I think $75,000 for us to get a consultant to come in and do an industrial master plan for the airport. So that would encompass all city-owned property around the airport, within the airport, to provide a plan. If the city were, did wanna move forward with industrial development, uh, to show prospective developers and to let us know what we are missing in terms of infrastructure, we would need to have to support those things. So that's something we did submit, and we hope, we hope we get that to support us as well.
So Mayor, what do we need to do at this meeting to move forward?
This workshop?
Yes, sir.
Well, actually, what we're taking up now is something that we're gonna take up in the regular meeting, but that's up to Kobe.
Yeah, so Gene Hurley will have an item this, later in the meeting, which may result in a continuance for a resolution. We can deal with that at that time. But the biggest thing right now we're looking for is the direction on the design. Do we want to wait until the EA is completed and got comments back and finalized from FAA? Or do we wanna move forward simultaneously with design? That, that's the question I need to, I need to know tonight, so we can let Garber know.
My opinion is move forward parallel.
Move forward.
You know, the thing is, uh, you're, I think, the most critical thing to jeopardize is the timing on ARPA dollars. And if this will give us edge up, I think that's what we ought to do.
Okay. I would, I would, I would say move forward.
And I don't wanna see us lose anything either, so unfortunately, I'm just trying to figure out what can we do so that we're all on the same, this is what we're saying today, based on the information we know today, but in a month from now, or at, at the end of October, I wanna revisit, I wanna hear an update. You know what I'm saying? It's like, so just in case we have to change up, or perhaps we get more back than what you were anticipating hearing.
Absolutely. If, if something comes back that causes a major issue with the project, we'll bring it back and have to discuss that, right? Because at some point, we'll run, Barge will run out of money and they won't more, so they'll require a change order at some point. So those things will come back, yeah. If we have a big issue with design, we'll be bringing that back. We'll keep the council advised, moving forward.
In the meantime, we're moving forward parallel.
If that's, everyone, if everyone is in consensus of that, then yes, we will. If we're not, then we'll need to put an item on the next regular, on the regular agenda to approve that. Does it seem like everyone's okay with moving forward?
I'm okay.
Okay, Mayor. I see five, so. We'll move forward, we'll provide updates.
Right. Nothing else you'd cover in this workshop?
Uh, no, sir, that, that was it. And the funding, as we talked about, that's something that Tim, James, myself, and staff, we'll start aggressively pursuing.
All right, Amy?
And it's not really referencing this, but is there any way we could add a prayer and the pledge at all these special meetings?
We got Mr. Ollie. He had a, he had a typo.
Okay. That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Good.
All right. Thank you very much, and we're going to adjourn until the 5 o'clock meeting.